So we'll call the meeting order at 6:04. Thanks everyone for, she's going to be a couple of minutes late, so hopefully she'll be here before too long. So first, agenda revisions. I have a few. I'm going to suggest that we add an item 2.4 about the Washington Central Unified Union School District.
School District.
School District, thank you. Yeah, I couldn't remember what the letters were for that.
That's okay.
Organizational meeting. I believe Susan Clark is going to be stopping us to talk with us about that. I'm going to suggest that we add 2.5, which is just briefly discussing and taking a decision about the last day at school this year. And I'm going to suggest that we add 2.6, essentially an executive session discussing the staffing issue. Are there any other revisions to the agenda? Okay, are there not any public comments from correspondence? Peter, any executive comments? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th, March 27th, and March 28th?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of March 20th, March 27th, and March 28th, please say aye.
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 Opposed, suspensions, motion carries. Okay, so we go to 2.1. So we have a contract issue to discuss, and I'm going to propose that we go into executive session to discuss this contract, and that we would invite Lori Bevo to join members of the executive committee in that conversation.
Good.
So, would you have my permission?
I move that we go into executive session to talk about contract or personnel issue. Is it a combination of two, or one more than the other?
It's a contract issue.
Contract issue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're going to come out of executive session at 6:22. No action taken. And we will move then to 2.2, which is the superintendent search, looking for a consultant. We have one of our candidates here, Peter Clark.
Do you like Peter to sit here so he can see all of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, just Peter, for one second, I just want to have a couple of comments to the executive committee. My preference would be to try to have as much of this interview as we can in open session, but if we're going to talk about the monetary aspects, or if we're going to talk about references specifically, I'm going to want to do that in executive session, just to kind of, you know, for Peter's privacy.
Sure.
But with that. Peter, I wasn't being, yeah, I wasn't being a behoze.
I was just giving my list of letters.
We really appreciate your coming up. And so I think everyone is aware that Dorothy and I had a chance to meet with Peter already and talk generally about what we are looking to do, which is hopefully conduct a search for interim superintendent for a period of one year. So we've had an opportunity to kind of have a little bit of back and forth already.
Thank you.
And I don't really have a protocol for how to proceed here. I think that, you know, it could be appropriate for maybe to ask Peter to introduce himself and to provide a little bit of an overview of, you know, his take on some of the things that we discussed, and then we can kind of go from there, in terms of asking him questions, or, everyone's had a chance, I think, to review your resume, at least. And we've got about, we can take up to 30 minutes for this conversation if we need to.
Okay. Well, as you saw, I was retired about three years ago after 46 years, 10 of them in Montpelier, seven of them down in Bronxville, New York, and three of them at an independent school that I was head of, that was an expeditionary-based high school, which was probably one of the most interesting things that I did.
The fun expeditionary? I haven't heard that before.
It was a school in which students and their teachers spent three months on the road that think an educational version of Outward Bound. And so it was a leadership program, and based on those principles, and Outward Bound came to the United States based on the principles of an educator by the name of Kurt Hahn, through Phillips Andover Academy, Josh Minor, and those same principles were the same principles that are at the basis of the Peace Corps. And that's where Sergeant Shriver went to get, I mean, so we're going to send a bunch of American kids over into Africa, you know, they'll be back in two weeks, okay? And so he was looking for a kind of leadership development program, and the Gordonston School in Scotland put those two things together into a holistic educational approach, and the idea was to bring that back. It was very exciting, and it would still be in existence today, only the 90 acres that was chosen by the founder to site the school the year we needed to expand. We couldn't find a place to perk on 90 acres. So I was to say that that idea went south, literally. So anyway, it was somewhat of a disappointment, but I closed up shop there. And I went back and finished in the classroom, because that first year, I wanted to deal with the fiduciary responsibilities, and I was pleased that every single investor and everybody at the school owed money to, we were able to make everybody whole and still have money left over from the money that we had raised to contribute to educational nonprofits in the state of Massachusetts, which is one of the things you can do if you're a nonprofit when you're closing up. And going back into the classroom was, you know, it turned out to be, you know, that first year, I said, I think I want to keep doing that for a while, because I was able to write a lot of curriculum, work with high school kids, develop curriculum in religion, ethics, and world history. And then three years ago, I retired and came back up to Vermont, and happened to meet with Steve Dale, and I said, so what's happening? I want to come back. And he said, well, funny you should ask. And so there's this major legislature initiative that's going to be difficult, but I think you have a skill set to contribute to, and that was based on the work that Brian and I did in Montpelier, which was a lot of strategic planning, a lot of community engagement, in order to develop what is now, and I apologize to people, Act 77, which is a state mandate, community-based learning, personal learning plans, all of that stuff, was all a part of the work that myself, Val Gardner, other educators at that time, were interested in. And we were interested in it because when I got to Montpelier, even though Montpelier's in, I think, similar profile U32, very high graduation, a very high reticulation rate to college, but also an inordinately high dropout rate, which was, I think, 7% to 9%, which was almost 35 or 40 kids that never made it. They started as ninth and eighth, and never got to the end. And that was just not acceptable to, to the community, it wasn't acceptable to me as an educator, and we had to figure out how to do that. And so all of those things, and as I say, I apologize to teachers, we developed those things in order to keep kids at school. Now they're a mandate, and nobody responds very well. Nobody responds very well to mandates. It's much more fun to solve a problem and do so creatively. But they came about in that sense honestly, and a lot of that work I'm very proud of. So it was that community process work that I really loved doing, and I wanted that service to be a hallmark of what I did as a semi-retired educator. So I dived in. I did 12 or more studies. Most of them passed, two of them didn't. They were all difficult in one way or another, helping people find common ground. In some places, we were successful, in other places, we weren't. And then I did three or four alternative studies, because those made the most sense to me to work on, because there was an educational argument to be made, and I think three of them were accepted by the state board, and one of them was not. And so, you know, I wish I could have found, helped communities find educational and common ground on every single one of them, but some of those were very difficult, and some of the problems were intractable. And I can go into that more, but this is really about the superintendent search, so I started my own LLC, and I did that work. I had been mentoring principals in Vermont during the last three years, which is incredibly rewarding work, and gives me a really good sense of what is happening inside the schools and the challenges that are occurring. And the last piece of work has been curriculum development at the middle school level, and strategic planning work. A lot of, I have a very good sense of, well, if you decide you want to merge, and now you have to create this new thing, okay, what's that about? What you have to go through in order to do that? And some of the most important pieces, at least that I wrote into the studies that I helped lead, was the importance of the board focusing on cultural and community-building efforts, because as you all know, this is a difficult process. And so continuing to keep a community engaged as you build, you know, or reinforce the vision that the school has, you know, there's an opportunity for a reset, but there's also an opportunity to communicate, there's an opportunity for people to better understand what the schools were about, because they're sort of paying attention, because this is all very useful. The more you can engage, the more inclusive you can create a process, the better. And then the last piece of work I've been doing is, nobody's built any schools in Vermont for a long time, for the very obvious reason that there's been no state aid, something that is a problem. And so in one of the places that did decide to merge, Slate Valley, a lot of the elementary schools do not have critical masses of seventh and eighth graders, and so their program has been contracting at a time when a middle school person needs their world to open up. And so Slate Valley, the community really wants to explore the creation of a middle school, and in my lifetime, I again led community-wide processes, one in Montpelier that led to the renovation of the high school, and then four others in the course of my lifetime. And I know how to write educational specifications and work with architects. So when you think about all of that experience in terms of the work that's in front of you, you could clearly say, well, he hasn't done a superintendent search. Well, I've been a part of a number of them. I know what, you know, what material is helpful to a candidate. I know that a district has to put together a clear profile of who it is and what it's looking for, and if you're looking for an interim. And you have to try to, you know, be clear about what it is you want the interim to do and what it is you don't want the interim to do, because in your particular case, I would say that it's pretty challenging. And clearly, I think one of the things, at least talking with Matt and Dorothy, is clearly, you want the trains running in time, for lack of a better way of putting it, and someone who is skilled and experienced in that regard. But it's also happening against a backdrop of change, which is going to be hard, probably for that person to keep out of in some kind of way. And I did speak a little bit to Matt about the board maybe thinking through what the next year is going to be about, and what aspect of that, you know, transitional year, given the uncertainty of where you lie versus this required merger, and the current court case that you're engaged in, which is important to the community, how to move forward in that way, because one way or the other, by 2020, when this person's term is up, or when you get to the fact of your new superintendent coming on, things are going to be different. And the superintendents for whom I have been working with who are leading merger processes, trying to keep the trains running on time, and do the things that are necessary so that the school is ready to educate kids in whatever form that's going to take in a year, and given the uncertainty, is challenging. And so I think it would be worth, even though you're focused on an interim, to try to think about it in the larger context, because I think the person, when you get to the interview stage, is going to ask, so, yes, there's this, but what about this other thing? How do I, you know, what are you expecting in terms of this, or how do I navigate, and how's the board going to get the support it needs in order to move forward in whatever ways the sort of the fates allow, I guess, in some way? So that's a general overview, in terms of how I'm thinking. I think what you want is someone who can put together really clear materials, who writes well, who can represent well. I think one of the things that people appreciated is that I listen extremely well, and I can translate that into writing that basically captures what the values and the intentions, if you will, of the people for whom I'm facilitating and helping to do that. So I'll shut up.
So we'll turn up for questions, yeah, for people who have.
Have we introduced ourselves?
We have.
No, but that would be fun.
That would be great.
Yeah, let's introduce ourselves.
Because I think if there are younger faces that knew me when I was younger, and now I'm this old person, you know, that would, you know, please don't say, you know, I was in your class or something like that, because that would be at this point extremely embarrassing if it's on television.
So yeah, let's go, why don't we start with you?
I'm Flor Deismith, I live in East Montpelier, I'm on the board at East Montpelier, and I'm an architect.
I'm Kari Bradley, we met earlier, I'm U32 board.
I'm Chris Meade from the Remy board.
Dorothy, hello again.
Did your husband eat all the donuts?
No, I got mine home. But he was appreciative.
I'm Markeen Cowell, school board.
You're Arpreet Bharan, school board.
So what do you think? What's on your mind?
You know, I'm going to open up just a little bit, because I'm really, you know, we're really, we're in a difficult situation, you know, with this transition. We don't know, but our communities are also split very heavily, in spite of, I mean, in a nutshell, you know, there are a lot of very damaging issues that this is causing our community, and these problems aren't going away. So, you know, to some extent, we, you know, we have to, we have to have somebody, as you said, that keeps the train on the rails here. We have to, we don't want to cause a huge amount of disruption in the education through this transition process. And then we also have to have somebody that's not just indoctrinated into, this isn't just about education, this is also about health of our community, it's a much bigger thing than just education. And I don't care what anybody says, it plays to that, and that's what's on the people's minds. So we need, the communities themselves over this next year and this transition are going to be, if we're forced, you know, this superintendent, even this temporary superintendent, is going to be a part of this conversation. And I think it's going to be important, they might have the right attitude toward helping to facilitate that conversation, to keep it productive rather than split. And I think that's a really important, a really important piece in this conversation, because this can be, these communities are not done with this issue, it's too, the issues for many of them are true, and they have severe and high. And I think that it's going, you know, we have certainly not reached the peak of public awareness about what's going on. And so that, yeah, I think that's the characteristics of this person, they're going to really have to be good at facilitating that conversation.
Right, I would agree, Richard. I think you're going to be looking for a person that has a level of, you know, maturity and a capacity to differentiate between themselves and all of the stuff around, not to personalize. And someone who's probably not conflict adverse. I mean, if I had, as a consultant, been conflict adverse, I would not have stepped into Act 46, okay? I wouldn't even have gone down to Bronxville, New York, after 10 years in Montpelier and the amount of work that we did. I mean, I was ready to move, but Bronxville had seven principles, no, I think it was 10 principles in 12 years almost, or seven in 10 or 12 years, which was not necessarily a prescription, and not something that I would have taken on had I been younger, okay? Because I don't think I would have been up to the task. But I understood, you know, once you understand what those are, you know, there are leadership qualities that can help even the most fractious communities come together. So you're, you know, I think the challenge is going to be, how big a pool can we get even for an interim? And for lack of a better way of putting it, I think you're probably going to be looking for someone who is certainly not in it for the money, and has some sense of mission and love of children and love of education, that understands not only the breadth of what they're facing, but even the limitations that go with it, but to make a contribution. In other words, to make it about the community and not about them. And one of the things that I think sometimes interims do is, they're like, they're like me right now, in terms of, I'm a grandfather, okay? And being a grandfather is really great, because you can love the kids, and you can help the kids, and you can support the kids, but you go home at night, they're not yours. And I think in that sense, you need, I don't know, maybe that's too, a wise grandmother or a wise grandfather in that sense, that is skilled, that can, you know, and can help people hear one another as best they can, and who understands the importance of community building throughout the process. Even at the best of times, even when we did the bond in Montpelier, you know, that was not a slam dunk. We wanted to build a new high school, and that didn't happen, and we had to go back to the drawing board. And if we had lost patience, if we did not listen, if we did not understand, then nothing would in that sense have been gained. And so I think those attributes that you're talking about, whoever's going to come here is going to know exactly what you just said. And so then the question is, what kind of partnership is this going to be? And how can I contribute? How can I help, you know, in the short time I'm going to be here, you know, make a difference? And sometimes, you know, there are people that go into this for the very reason of helping, you know, communities through transitionary times, because they're so good, they're so good at it. And there's a great deal of satisfaction that goes with that.
And that really hits, that's something that's really needed, and that's, is that objective? Yeah. That's along the lines of my question, is what are the, what are the opportunities that the interim status offers us? How can we take advantage of that?
Well, I think you're looking for a particular kind of individual at certain, you know, time in their life. I mean, I would not shy away from, I mean, first of all, you're not going to be able to hide the notion that this has been around a controversial two or three years, okay? And so I think for the community to basically say, you know, this is the elephant that's in the room, and this is, you know, what needs to happen, is going to be, you know, reassuring to, I think, a candidate who is at a point in their life where that's the kind of contribution that they want to make. They'd still like to have an impact in their career, and they, and they're not afraid of the challenge, and feel, well, if I do this work, I'm not just, you know, I mean, this is where I would sell it, I would sell it as, you can come here and make a real difference, okay? That, you know, the people are, I don't know, the people are in conflict, but helping people through that, I mean, for me as an individual, I've never been shy about that. That's always, you know, maybe that's the old, you know, Ohio boy style, you know, you walk in and you leave a place a little better than you found it. And maybe you don't saw, after 46 years, I mean, education is not where it is where I thought it was going to be. I mean, I thought we could, you know, fix the whole kitten caboodle, okay? And sometimes I look back at my career and say, you know, I feel like at times I only moved things an inch forward, but I think about the kids from whom that inch was important, okay? And so what I'm modeling right here is what I hope you're going to hear from the candidates that we could find. And what I think is important in terms of what I can bring to the process is, that's what I can articulate this job is about. Because if somebody just wants, I mean, there may be somebody who wants to do it for the money, I mean, there's always people, or, you know, that misunderstands the difference between service, which is what I'm talking about, and, you know, I'm God's gift to education, and this is a mess, and I'm going to come in and fix it. I don't think that's going to serve you very well, because you're going to need someone with a real capacity to listen, to mirror, and to bring those things back. And if we were putting together, you know, the profile, I would start with what Richard is talking about, and try to articulate it in terms of, this is, this is an opportunity, this is an opportunity to add to the service if that was important to you. So I think in that sense, you're looking for someone that sees education in some senses as a mission in your life. And there are people that are still out there, for whom that still matters.
Where's the, I'm assuming there's going to be a balance, if you're involved in this, between guidance and prodding in terms of the search forward?
Right.
Where do you see that, in terms of when you need to do which, and how you would do each? Because you've had quite a number of leadership positions in school, training schools, and I'm sure you've been on the giving and receiving end of that. So how have you developed that?
Well, on the prodding net, I think you use a network of people that you know, and even people you don't know, and, you know, put together something that allows you to say, here's what this opportunity is, and, you know, try to take, you know, recommendations. So I think putting that in the paper isn't really going to be enough. And one of the things that, if you work with me, one of the, I think, strategic things we're going to have to decide is, are we going to just look in Vermont, or are we going to look outside of Vermont? And if we look outside of Vermont, how are you going to help whoever this person is, it might have all the skills we're talking about, but doesn't have a clue as to what is, you know, what they're dealing with. And so what is the supports you're going to put in place for that person? And one of the things I suggested to Matthew is, yes, I can do the focus, and I can limit it to the notion of finding you an interim. Or perhaps we can use that as a first step in building a larger relationship that says, let's find the interim. But, you know, maybe in that process, you decide, you know, we like the facilitating skills that you're bringing to the table, and so we want you to stay on, not only to help whoever this person is, you know, mentor them and help them with all the things they don't really understand about this process, and also act in service to the board in anticipation of the fact that one way or the other, you're going to have to do a longer-term service as opposed to, you get that done, and then you find another individual, and then you move on. I would not suggest that if, if in that initial relationship with me, you, you know, hit a point and saying, this person's way out on the field, okay, so let's just get this part done, or, and find somebody else in terms of the long term. But if there's the possibility of continuity because of the kinds of ways I'm framing this, that can help, so that the person is not walking into blind. This is very difficult, because they're going to hit the ground running, and who's going to support them in that process? And I think the more contextual support, and I think that's where potentially my mentoring skills become extremely important, because the fine line of mentoring is not telling somebody what to do, okay? Particularly an experienced superintendent, but helping them think through. I mean, there are superintendents that I unofficially mentor, because they need time and someone who's sort of neutral, just to think about all the things that are on the table right now with these mergers, okay? Because it's systemically, it's systemically complex, even if everybody's happy. And not everybody is happy. Even the districts that you think are happy, it's hard. This is really hard work. And so if you're walking in from, let's say, Massachusetts or New York, and I think the key there and I think the key there is at least to try to find someone who, even though they might not necessarily have been from Vermont, at least understands the regional demands. So let me give you a contrasting argument. When, when the superintendent that I worked for in Bronxville left, they ended up bringing someone down from Saratoga, New York, who didn't have a clue as to what Westchester County was about, what Western County was like. And he was basically a fish out of water. And the board did not provide him any kind of support and it went south pretty quickly. Even though the administrative team, you know, tried to be as supportive as possible. So it has to be some kind of context for understanding, even if they're, they're not, you know, from Vermont. And I think you need to think seriously about what the supports this person's going to need to be successful with you. So that would be the larger piece. But if you, I don't know how big the pool is in Vermont. And, you know, maybe we don't have to go very far from home to find the kind of profile of person that we've been talking about, but it's possible that we may, in which case.
How do we fill that gap? I get it?
Right.
Because that is a big issue. This transition year is, this isn't just walking into a gap year. This is walking into a major transition within the school system. So the lack, if somebody from out of state is not going to, they may not, they're not going to be dialed into.
Right. So if you find somebody in state that understands what this transition is about, fine. But even so, that person's, in my experience, going to be support, going to need support. If you have to find someone who is not familiar with what's going on, they're going to need even more degree of support. And that's something that, because no one wants to come to a place to fail. So I would think at one stage of the interview, they're going to say, so, you know, this is a pretty big thing you're talking about here, so what are the supports that are going to be in place? And I think even if that is a team of, you know, kind of informal support team of board members and a consultant and, you know, some faculty and et cetera, you know, they're better off. But to just simply throw them in and, I hope they are still around in three months, that would be a mistake. I think you can plan for success if you're honest about the challenges that are in front of you. And that's what I would hope I could help you do.
I have a.
I've got about five minutes.
So, I don't know, this might be too far deep in, but the board, as the board, we play a big role, right? In creating that culture. And I feel, this is just a personal feeling, so, that I feel like that our leadership team and every school right now does a pretty good job of being that professional learning organization. They've been working on, and we have as a whole, we have our student learning outcomes and all this stuff. What role would you play in even just getting what we need for the superintendent in creating that culture as a board? So we're going to have to work with the community, we're going to work, but as a, as a board, we need to model the change that we want to see. So that is a little bit of a challenge right now so that we are all, you know, I think we all, we all care, we are all for kids and, but we, we're in that, at that moment that we really have to, you know, decide how, how we're going to lead. Not that it has to be top-down, but if the, the school board is not functioning at a high level, it's really, it's going to be really hard for that interim person. Would you have any suggestions or insight?
I would think that part of the, part of the charge here for your facilitator is, could be if they have the skill set, and I believe I do, to think about board development. Because that will make it, that will make it easier as well. I mean, I, I don't know exactly where that stands, but, you know, rational thing would say, okay, so we're going through this difficult time, okay? And maybe some of us want A and some of us want B. And, but we, the advantage, I think, at this point is if you can take a step back, is that, that's been set into motion. And so if, if you can sort of take a step back, what's the Buddhist word for a little? I'm thinking separation, okay?
Detachment.
Detachment, that's it. And advocate like heck for the outcomes that you want. But when we're talking about the day-to-day life of the district, which directly impacts the quality of the student's life, can we come together and set that as a larger goal? And maybe we need some greater ground rules in terms of how, you know, we talk to one another and all the rest of that in order to serve that greater good of the kids right now. Understanding that I fully expect and appreciate that you are going to, you know, do whatever it takes given what, you know, you're engaged in because you're looking for this kind of outcome. And that's not easy for human beings to do. But I think there are skills and ways that, in terms of board development, that hopefully we can agree to disagree on some things and understand that the greater good is X and to have honest conversations about that that are facilitated.
I have one last question.
Sure.
What are you reading right now?
What am I reading? Well, I am reading, you know, this is like this.
Professionally?
No, no, not professional, anything. No, no, any.
Oh, now I know how Sarah Palin felt, because I read a lot.
No, you don't. And you know she was reading it all.
But no, I have so much on my Kindle right now.
You read all the newspapers?
Yeah. Just like to try to break it up from, you know, usually we try to ask either what is your favorite book? It depends on the interviews, or what are you most proud of? You know, just to try to get to know you, so get to know you a little bit, not just, you know, because ultimately we're all going to be human beings working together, so.
I read a lot of science fiction. I read a lot of philosophy. Right now I'm in the middle of Doris Kearns Wynn's book, Wait Till Next Year, about the Boston Red Sox and having a ball, so. And we, you know, my wife and I tend to pass Kindles back and forth, okay? She finishes something, I had to read this. For example, The Boys in the Boat. What a great book. If you haven't read The Boys in the Boat, you have to read The Boys in the Boat. So anyway, I don't, I know that there were nuts and bolts that we didn't get to. If you want to talk about that later in terms of cost, et cetera, that's fine.
We should at least get a cost study. You know, if we have to read executive session or just have it, just we have Apple stock.
You want to quickly?
Move to, move to, we go into executive session for contract issues.
All in favor?
All right.
Session at seven oh one with no action taken.
Great.
Everybody.
And. So I'd like to welcome Mark Andrews.
Hello.
Dorothy and I had a chance to speak with Mark last week actually and then again earlier this week. You know, very helpful in kind of helping us think through even the approach, you know, the whole concept of the search. And so we're pleased to have you today. Maybe we should quickly go around, introduce people that you haven't had a chance to meet yet.
Laura, yes, next, from East Montpelier. Nice to meet you.
And I'm Carrie Bradley, U thirty-two Florida.
Can I just speak back from the Romney Board?
Daisy Naylor from Calis. Nice to see you again.
Richard Kane from Calis.
Here from Berlin.
It's an SU board.
It's an SU board, yeah, an SU executive.
Executive, yeah.
So we're going to do as much of this conversation as we can in session. We talked about keeping two areas if we need for executive session. One is sort of the monitoring aspects. If we want to discuss your references, we'll do that in executive session for privacy, both you and the people that provided them. So, but it would be great, maybe if you would want to start by introducing yourself and kind of, you know, giving an overview of your thoughts from having talked to me and Dorothy or kind of what you see as being our challenge and how to approach it, that'd be great.
Well, let's start with, the reason is a good bottom. The challenges are always going to be there, right? But you might be interested in why I'd be interested in this line of work. And, you know, I guess the greatest reason is that I want to continue to contribute to the field. Having retired in two thousand seventeen as a still vertical superintendent, I still had a lot of life left in me and felt that I wanted to continue to be part of this great conversation on how to serve boards in the good work that you do. I have allegiance to this SU, I'm a colleague of Bill's and I know several members of your leadership team. I live in Elmore County, so I have a sense of, you know, how it works in a multi-count organization like this SU. But I know that this is probably the most important job that the board has is hiring a CEO or a superintendent. And if I could play a role in that in my capacity as a retired superintendent, I would be honored to do that. But I think a particular interest again is because of my allegiance to the SU. So that's really the primary reason. I also want to stay current as a retired superintendent. I'm licensed for another five years, I was a K-12 principal and a superintendent. It allows me to stay, again, engaged in the work, good work that's happening. Because not only am I interfacing with boards and ostensibly the community, but I get to spend time with quality educators and administrators as well in this capacity as a consultant. And I live in Elmore, so it's close by. If this would gun it, then I might, I might be considering.
Could you, could you give us just like a brief, everyone's seen your resume, but just a brief kind of overview of your background and kind of maybe how you would propose to approach, you know, a search like this?
Sure. Well, you've seen, you have seen my resume. So I came through a non-traditional door. I was never a classroom teacher. I worked in mental health for a number of years in the private industry. And what's led me to, I guess, if I understand the question, Matthew, I really felt the best, the best, the greatest impact I'm going to have as a person professionally and personally is to, is to lead. In my, my thesis has always been, it's not how many people follow, but how many leaders I can develop along the way. And so I feel that in this capacity as a consultant, whether it be a search consultant or team development or board development, it allows me to work with staff and with the board and community to be pushy and power and find your voice, to be able to, you know, really transcend some practices that need to be addressed. And I think your governance model here is an evolving model. More is left to be determined in that case. And so having, being part of the work here in this region in Vermont, helping boards sort of rethink governance is also something I think lends itself nicely to my interest in leadership. Does that, that all make sense?
Yeah, great, thanks.
And I did start my teaching career in Elmore County, in Hyde Park, in a one-room schoolhouse. Elmore had changed since nineteen seventy-seven. Kids with disabilities were not allowed in the classroom. So I had an old Volkswagen bus, just a little bird walk here. And the only time we were allowed to go to high school was for lunch, was just for lunch. And I'd throw them to the van and hope you want, and that was our thirty minutes of inclusion. So we'd come along, yeah. I just prayed that the Volkswagen bus would start before.
Parting on a bill?
Yeah. It was, it was a mental transition.
So Dorothy and I had a chance to speak with you, obviously, so we want to give a chance for others to ask questions or, yeah.
How do you think you would approach engaging, again, well, this is a question for, how would you balance prodding and guiding in terms of moving forward on a superintendent search? With the group that you're going to be working with?
Yeah, I'd love, I'd love to use the latter, thinking that's more guidance than prodding. But what Dorothy and I, Matthew and I talked about, your time is of the essence here. And we've got to be really aggressive coming out of the gate. I mean, I fleshed out a proposal that I emailed to Matthew, I don't know if you have a chance to answer that. And I've also fleshed out of, you know, what a timeline might look like. Dorothy had asked if I'd do that, it would be presumptuous of my part to bring that forward tonight. But you don't have a lot of time. And I think under the ideal circumstances, we would have more time to go deeper into some visioning. You know, do we have consensus within the SU board and executive committee? And what are the qualities that you're looking for in your next leader? And to understand what your community thinks about that, not only your parent business and non-parent business community, but also your educators and school leaders. That's really where, that's really where we need to begin. That over here, because it's April fourth, you know, I think that I would want to present what I think is a plausible way to approach this. And again, I'm using the word aggressive because it is. We would start on Monday next week. I would want to start with the executive committee, you folks, and minimally taking a look at what are the minimum qualifications that you'd be looking for in a candidate? And what would be the ideal, how do we blend those? But again, we don't have a lot of time to discuss that. That would help to frame what your school spring or what your ad is going to look like. I don't think we want to put just a boilerplate ad in school spring. I think it needs to be aligned with what your beliefs are, what you're looking for. So really try to sequence some activities that all sort of, you know, scaffold up to the point where you're going to offer a contract hopefully by the end of, end of May. So getting back to the question of prodding and guiding, I'd like to think there'd probably be a little bit of both. I'm not really a servant person, but I also know when you flip up the hourglass, you've got to move on things. So one of my requests would be there'd be a board liaison from this committee that I'd be able to work with. It's much easier to work with a group of seven than it is a full supervisory union board. So bravo that your board delegated to you that big responsibility. But that said, I still need someone who I can be able to communicate with on a regular basis, as well as one of working with Bill's colleagues here in central office. But I would, I would put that out there, hold accountable to it. You don't have any, you, there's no, you can't negotiate that, you have to get it done. Does that help?
Yeah, that is helpful, thank you.
Would you be committed just to the interim or would you be interested in continuing with us? And I know that that's not the question in front of us right now, but since, as a, you know, to try to start creating that culture, it would be important to have that one person.
Well, it's a fair question and I'm glad that you raised it. It may not belong here tonight.
Yes, sorry.
I am, no, 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 I have clearly, as I told Matthew and Dorothy, it's the body of work. I want to be engaged in going forward. I've taken a year and a half off and I've done some other things. And I'm ready to get back into some service. So if there was a need in the part of this executive committee or your board colleagues, then absolutely I would look over the invitation and chat about that. There's also what happens if, you know, you don't, if this process doesn't yield a candidate? And I mentioned, I think, to you guys in my proposal that I can bring it to the finish line and hopefully a candidate's going to emerge. But if not, there's got to be a plan B that the executive committee has on, oh, what do we do now? We shouldn't wait for that, oh, moment, we should start planning that now. And I can, again, we can have those conversations, but it's going to be incumbent upon this group to put that plan in place. And your community's going to look for that, right?
We thought a little bit about the pros and cons of seeking a permanent versus interim.
Yes.
But from your perspective, what are the opportunities that we have with the interim status? And how can we take advantage of those?
Yeah, that's a great question. You have just an amazingly strong leadership team here. And I, I'm not saying that just because the old man on my left is sitting there. He's done some really amazing work over the last six years in this SU, building that capacity at the leadership team level. So I think the advantage is that you've got a real strong engine and you've got a very cogent plan and you have a sort of blueprint that is leading the team forward. So an interim's not going to disrupt that. If, if you had a candidate pool and you went out in December, January of two thousand nineteen and you had more viable candidates than, you know, a full-time person might make sense because they've got that time to study it, but as an interim, that's off the table. I mean, you'd want to make sure that your ad or your interview process is crafted in such a way that you're not asking them to make any significant changes other than the things that need to happen at the operational level. So I think that that's a strength of a interim. There's not going to be a lot of parents, I can tell you that. What I facilitated with search processes in the Southwest back in January, we had twenty-two applicants. I think I brought forward seven in a first round of interviews. So that shows you, a lot of people can apply, but they're not meeting, you know, the expectations that you will have identified before we, before we start interviewing. So that shows you, a lot of people can apply, but they're not meeting, you know, the expectations that you will have identified before we start interviewing. So that's another advantage of an interim, is that you might find someone who just is going to fit that one-year role and have to make a commitment beyond that. And I might be all wrong, there might be people lining up to come over.
These are very strong communities, you know, there's been, for years and years, very strong bonds. So this issue is divided, that doesn't mean that strength is not there yet. You know, it's the issue itself. You know, it's very poorly crafted, legislation, in my opinion, that's really divided not only us but many communities. What would be important, I think, from my eyes here, and so much of this is still in flux. We've got the court case sitting out there, and we have the communities. There are certain things they do not want to give up, and they want to structure. I mean, they have to figure out how to structure within this framework in a way that they can keep some semblance of what they believe in, and so.
Are you speaking about the boards?
I'm talking about the boards, so the person, the interim person, or, and if that interim person turns into a long-term or.
Could be.
You know, I think what we're going to need is somebody that can really work with the boards and to some extent, keep their hand on that community pulse a little bit to help translate those desires and those real concerns, and be something who's productive forward, not ramrod, you know, a boilerplate of any kind. I know we're in a position where we've got a lot of things that just have to happen to keep this ship from falling, not falling apart, but we don't want it to deteriorate. But we also want to enable its growth in a healthy way in the community itself, so.
Yeah, I'm aware very anecdotally on some of the struggles that you guys have experienced. There's a lot of print media that I've been, you know, made aware of that. You know, full disclosure, Bill certainly doesn't just share with me any of that. But I also recognize, and you do as well, it's not one person who's going to change, change things. It really is a community, that's a great metaphor. You know, you're going to hire someone as an interim, they may or may not have. We want them to be very aware of Act forty-six and sort of the dynamics that are at play. But it's not going to be an interim who's going to, is going to move that needle forward without the support of the board. Hence, I started with, you have to have this bigger conversation about what you're looking for, because you don't have the time. Recognize that you may not have the right, you might not find that interim that you're really looking for to help support the board. You may need to augment, you might need more capacity around technical assistance. Maybe there are other people in the field along with an interim who can assist in that area. I mean, I've, you know, I've been out of it for, you know, for two years. We helped facilitate the merge between Shippuden Central and Essex Town, which was an amazing amount of work. But it paled in terms of how dynamic it was compared to trying to merge multiple boards. So there are people like myself who've had those experiences, but you might find someone who hasn't. Therefore, there might need to be some augmentation around that level of support boards are looking for. But I totally understand that, and it'll take years to, there's some repair work that has to happen, that's obvious to me. It takes some period of time, more than one year, to right that ship. You know, the way I thought about the, if, whoever, whatever that ad looks like, there are three main components to it. One is you want someone who's got some experience with, you know, managing a multi-level tiered variety, you know, soup-to-nuts organization with fiduciary responsibilities, personnel, you know, the operations. That in itself is a huge job, right? And I know that you've got capacity in your central office team to assist with that. The other piece is about how do you support the good leadership and good instruction in what's happening in this district already. So you need someone who knows how to work with a real talented team, and then help people get stronger in that years' period, hopefully. And the third piece is what you're speaking to, Richard, is that, it's that, you know, that piece around governance. How do you sort of re-establish trust in good communication competence? Making sure you're really clear on roles and responsibilities, which also can be betrayal of trust if it's not clear. Transparency in that engagement piece. And finally, good creative problem solving. So we have this problem, how are we going to fix it? So that's, those are the three big components that I see, and that's a big job. And again, it's going to, that person's going to need your support and his or her ability to take that on. I'm not sure where my job is at, I'm going to bring forward to you viable candidates.
And that's what, yeah, that's what this is about.
That's what this is about, and it will be your job to decide whether or not they're the ones who can do what you all are looking for them to do. My job is to get them to the table. Through some guidance, and maybe some prodding.
Would you, in your role, be willing to say there is an viable candidate here?
Absolutely. We don't have time to, yeah, we wouldn't want to bring someone forward who's going to fall flat on their face, no way. No way. I think there's going to be an element of headhunting here. I mean, I, you know, we can put out the obligatory, here's the ad, right? And you're going to get people from far away, it's going to wait, who are going to, you know, who are going to apply. I'm not kidding you. But are they, how viable are they? It's just going to be wait and see. So it's going to be a level of the consultant wanting to get out there and beat some bushes a little bit. I'm sure Peter has contacts, I have contacts, Bill has contacts, the VSA's. You know what I mean, there's got to be a little bit of that advocacy and a sort of this unparted consultant to shake it up a little bit. It's not just this passive, let's see who applies, we've got to be working on it.
So you're a prod people?
There's some prodding there, yeah. And I think you would, in the proposal, or at least in my, the range of activities need to be engaged. And I really would recommend that you have your contract reviewed ahead of time by an attorney, making sure that, I'm sure it is commensurate with what, you know, what you have to have in statute. But making sure there's some incentives on the table to attract people. Everything from salary benefits to those sorts of things. But some sort of review, albeit maybe a cursory review would be prudent. So they're really clear about that. So when people ask the consultant, well, what, you know, what's the contract about? I don't want to be wavering, say, oh, I got to check with Matthew, you know, you want to be really clear about that. Again, that's, I'm sure you know that's a little brain.
So we have the timing, it's a sort of awkward timing in terms of going out to do a search, in terms of how it typically work, or the way that the sort of educational recruitment of leadership usually happens. We also have a very short timeframe, so those are two big obvious challenges. Are there any other sort of pitfalls or sort of potential obstacles? I guess, what would be the, does anything else come to mind that could possibly derail or really interfere with our?
I don't think so, Matthew. I, I, I wouldn't, I would hope there would not be derail. I think one obstacle may be people understanding what you're trying to accomplish here. And so as part of my proposal, and part of the sequence of activities, there needs to be a, once you have had a couple meetings, a couple sessions under your belt to identify, you know, minimum ideal qualifications, you need to start framing what your communique is going to look like with staff soon. First, respect to them. And then shortly after that, a communique or using your Robo Messenger service, or Facebook, or social media, whatever, to let your parent and non-staff community know. So not letting them know, you don't want to keep people in the dark. And there needs to be a real strong rationale on why you're going interim and not permanent, and sort of laying out, you know, what the process is going to look like with some timelines. And again, that builds trust that they will have in you as trustees of the organization, that you're doing the right thing for the right reasons. So that, if you didn't do that, I'm sure you know this, that that may lead to some confusion and some false starts. You'll make it through, I promise you.
No, we won't.
You've been down rows, bumpy like this before, you'll make it through, yeah.
What do you say, let me see, it's strengths. I mean, you know, from my perspective, and having lived in Calis for twenty years now, you know, I see these communities actually bound very tightly, this has been divisive.
Act forty-six.
Sure, and it's, you know, it's a problem with the way it was constructed. It's flawed. But that, I mean, what strengths do you see? I would see this as actually being, you know, a positive for people. You know, this has been a strong district for a long time, or a group of districts, and this is an issue in a lot of places.
It is.
So I would, how would you portray that as an attractive position for us to be?
Yeah, I mean, I think for some people, it would be, it would be a reason why they would want to take that job on. And it's more than just listening. I think it starts with listening and hearing the story. You know, what, anybody brought to the table, I brought to the table for your consideration, would have to have that background knowledge about how divisive it has been. And it's not unanimous that this was the best piece of policy that came out of Elmoreville there. But I do think some people would be attracted to the opportunity to work with local communities in that regard. Outside of, you know, policy issues that you have to work on outstanding, but how do you get to know your community even as an interim? And hear what those stories are, and start rebuilding. I think people would be, there are people who are really good at that. Whether or not they also want to be a superintendent and take all the other stuff on, I'm not certain. But I know there's some great community leaders, and I see Bill as not just a superintendent, but as a community leader. And I hope, and I know that superintendents become lightning rods for some of this work. It's not our fault, you know, I mean, we're just trying to follow the law and do what's right, you know. Have we communicated and engaged enough, leading up to decisions that we have to make? Sometimes, we haven't had the privilege, you know, that time. But I do believe the superintendent, whoever it is, and it's an interim basis, would want to work with you in terms of what does that engagement look like? And it may take more than just a superintendent. I said that before, it might be other people who can do some community building with a community at Calis, to get a sense of where have you been, where do you want to be. And at some point, and we'll be totally candid, we have to get over it, right? At some point, by fiat, someone's going to say, this is what you need to do.
Well, that's not really the case. What's probably going to happen is that this whole system is going to morph, because it probably will fail somewhat on some levels, as foreseeable, as it has done in other states. So, you know, so this is going to be a learning process, and it's going to morph in both directions. And I think that's what's important in the end, is the outcome for the kids in the communities, to make sure that it doesn't, that we end up with healthy communities, in a broad sense. And so that's what, you know, I expect, and it's one thing I've seen within education, is there's a blindness to the bigger issue of community health sometimes. It gets so caught up in its own little world that sometimes the surgeon is killing the patient. So I think we, you know, moving forward, maybe this is less of an issue for, less of an issue for interim, but if it's somebody that carries forward, we want to have that vision of where, an open vision of where we need to go, what really is best, not what we're being forced into, but how do we continue to mold this for.
And if there are, and you're right, you just said what needed to be said, it's an interim position. Now, keep in mind, there might be people who come to the table who you think, boy, I wonder if you'd be interested in a full-time job. There might be that person, so you always have to be thinking long ball, right? But there are going to always be some, I guess, I'm just being pragmatic, you know, there's going to be some constraints around what you can and cannot do. And I think the superintendent needs to work within those constraints, but also know how to bend things, bend that line so we can meet the needs of the folks in Calis, and most importantly, the kids. And again, so I'm out of, it's out of my wheelhouse. I mean, that's not anything I've really experienced, but I think there are people out there that could, would fit the bill.
So we've got a couple of minutes. I just want to ask if the stuff that Mark has already shared is sufficient for the community to consider regarding the monetary side?
Yes, I think so. Unless there's any nuance on that, on what you've already presented.
I have shared the sort of outline of those all the years.
The one I sent you? Yeah, I hope I wasn't being presumptuous. I didn't want to jump off some place. No, there's no nuance, it's just straight up, yeah, gas money. I don't know if that's competitive.
So I have a question mark. If you, once you've talked to the leadership team and get a better sense of who we are, you know, I see this process also as an educational opportunity for all of us. So if you came to the conclusion that we needed a little bit more board development, and to do the same with the community, you would be willing to bring that up and say, you know, hire an interim, but you should also be doing some, you know, some board development, or some education around what, you know.
If that's a request that this committee made, then I'd be more than happy in a judicious way to say, here's some things you might want to think about. There's also other, there are other great resources in state and in this region that could help support good governance and good practice at the board level. And it's something that if you're already operating at a high level, I would always want to check your assumptions on that, because again, it's going to be a new landscape. We want to make sure everyone has the types of requisite skills and under predispositions going into this work. But I'd be more than happy to offer some observations, that would be helpful.
Yeah, the idea being that we can better support the interim person, you know, like.
That's what this is about, right?
It's this way, so that it also starts with us, so that we can all start working on that.
I agree, I would meet with the leadership team, again, very soon, and a central office team. I think it's important to recognize both groups of, both teams are really, really integral. And I think it's important to meet with them separately, even though there might be some overlap. I also think it's important to meet with faculty, but we don't have the time to do that, so.
Last question, what are you most proud of?
In my, in what way, just?
Or what would you base the company on, personally or professionally?
I've had a great career. I mean, I started in seventy-seven in a one-room schoolhouse, and other than a short stint doing some private work outside of Boston. I'm very proud of, you know, what I've accomplished in being able to work with people and get people, be able to, have people see a bigger, brighter, better future. I tend not to focus on what doesn't work right in the world. I tend to focus on the things that we should be happy and celebrate about, and use those assets to build a stronger community of care. I think I've done that, as a practitioner, but also as a superintendent, yeah.
Thank you.
We should both play in the bus right now.
Well, that was, that was, that was a sixty, I just, I just sold it. I just sold the Westfalia last year.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I took it out west and I came home and I said, ah, man, I don't know, a little bit too risky, so I sold it, yeah. I saw it on the side of his driveway one day, driving home, like, what's he doing, getting rid of that thing? I actually asked him, I said, what are you doing? Yeah, yeah, well, I'm right-sized, as I say. I wish you guys well, and if I'm not the chosen consultant, please, no, I don't personalize it at all. You'll make the right decision, and if I am selected, I'd be more than, more than honored to serve you guys.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Want to take care of my water? Good night.
Good night. Good night, Bill.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to suggest that we take maybe like a two or three-minute recess.
Susan and Susan.
What's that?
Did you say Susan and Susan?
I'm not sure she's here yet, but by the time she would expect any comments, so. If people want to use the restroom, grab some water. We'll come back from our recess at six thirty, six?
Seven.
Seven, all right, fair enough.
Seven thirty, it's nineteen thirty-four.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I pretended it was earlier than it is, yeah. So, yeah, I'm going to, I'll suggest that we table our discussion item around the superintendent search consultant, and we'll move to two point four, since we currently need to join us to talk a little bit about the organizational meeting.
Oh, oh.
Sure. You guys do copy, I'm going to give you the warning, so we're going to have the.
You asked me to do that, and I totally forgot.
And I actually, so my understanding is that this kind of came about sort of in a conversation.
Between Joe and us, yeah.
So I'm not sure, I can guess kind of what you wanted to come talk about, but I will guess, I'll let you actually say it yourself.
Well, I wanted to just walk through the warning and see if there's anything that, well, I mean, some of these articles, obviously, are things that aren't just yes or no, they take embellishment, you know, to establish, you know. So I wanted to just check and make sure that there's, you know, preparation, you know, for content. And, you know, obviously, stuff might come from the floor as well. I wanted to touch base on the, well, first of all, Bill and I walked around the space at the auditorium and the gym. And maybe you talked about this already, but.
No, I didn't, we haven't talked about it all.
Okay.
Yeah, I keep talking.
Yeah, and we sort of talked about the merits of the two spaces, and, you know, there are pluses and minuses to both of them. And finally, I just decided to pass the buck and ask the town clerks if they had any opinion. And they all unanimously wanted to stay in the auditorium. And that they said they felt that it was, because we were wondering, geez, they have way more room to spread out in the gym. You know, more room for the polling, which kind of got congested. But they thought that the reason it got congested was because they had placed the ballot box in the wrong place. But they liked the fact that the gym was comfortable. They liked the fact that people could see each other. They worried, as did I, about the lighting because it's hard to see from the front of the room. And Bill and I played with the lighting a bit. And it's, if you turn down, there's certain lights that... I mean, the room is intended to be able to see the stage, which is not what we want. We want the reverse. And if you turn down the stage lighting and turn up the lighting in the hall, I think it actually looks really well. And we talked about moving the podium to that.
Yeah, we're going to put you up on the stage as a podium. But there's a whole new sound system and podium system in there since we replaced the sound system.
Technically, I think it's not going to be presiding officer, it's going to be God.
The sound?
God, just God. The sound is like... Yeah, so it's good. Two roving microphones so that people can...
Go around.
Yeah, go around and you can have more, a little, gives a moderator maybe a little more control too about, you know, alternating, you know, space. So that it isn't always the same folks at the microphone. So.
You know, in terms of the town clerks, if, if it's going to be near the term, is there any sense of actually splitting them into different parts of the auditorium? Because having them all, you know, everyone was going there as opposed to different parts of the auditorium. Which is inside of the...
Yeah, they did have some thoughts about that. And so they, I, I, what I basically said to them was, do what you want. You know the space and you are the election officers. And make it work the way, you know, we, and Bill, I know, sent them an email and just said, let us know what you want.
Did they, did they mention just doing it on the stage? By do that behind a curtain, you could do it. Open a curtain, you could, I mean, that's, that's open space required.
It involved everybody going upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs.
You have to get out upstairs. You have to get out to do the handicap part.
It's not an easy way to do it. I just handed you that February nineteenth. I couldn't quickly find the one that's published for this time. I could probably go online, but this, you, you remember that we're starting at item three.
Right now. Exactly. Yeah. So, and I think the acoustics are better in the auditorium as well. So given that they, there was like, maybe we had no questions, that they wanted in the auditorium, and we were kind of saying, we're, we're going with the other one.
I think the only thing they asked for is if we give a few smaller tables, not quite as big tables for the check-in. That's something I've received so far.
Oh, they asked you that?
Yeah, they said, do you have some five or six-foot tables instead of eight-foot tables? We were kind of congested. Reorder it a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, they wanted to move their towns a little bit.
Yeah.
So I think they know what they're doing. I would like to, I, I'm not sure if this is going to work. What I would like to do, the first order of business is to elect a moderator. And I was very honored to serve as the temporary presiding officer. I felt really badly about the way that I'm unrolled. I felt really bad about Paul. I called him the next day and we just, you know, it's not how we should treat our moderators. And it, anyway, that was really unfortunate. I was glad to serve it because it seemed like it was necessary. What I would love to do is to suggest that maybe Gus Seelick would be a great moderator for the, to be elected for this spot. Number one, because he's a school moderator. I'm a town moderator and I haven't been a school moderator before. Gus has experience as a school moderator. And I also just kind of think it's not best practice. I mean, I know it's not best practice. I have somebody who's been outspoken on an issue, the moderating meeting. And Gus hasn't been and I have been. I mean, I, I feel like I can do it and I feel like I have the trust of the group. And so I, I felt comfortable, but I don't think it's best practice. So if Gus is willing, that's, that's what I'd like to suggest and I wanted to let you know that and see if everybody... And I think he's super well-respected. He's been the executive director of the Vermont Housing Conservation Board for thirty years. He knows the kind of content that we're talking about here. I think he's going to know them in the five towns. And he's the, he's the town...
Have you even, have you even asked him if he'd be elected?
I asked him and he said, yeah, probably. He hasn't said yes yet. He said, yeah, probably. So I was trying to get him before this meeting. So if he won't...
So the question would be, if, so we're doing that, should we give the option to the community? You know, like, so that they don't feel like we're putting somebody in? So would you give the same opportunity to Paul Hanlon and, you know, or maybe not Paul, but so that we're not, again, putting the community in a position that we're...
My guess would be that Paul's probably not going to try to do it again.
Oh, no, I'm surprised. He would be willing.
But you're, you're sort of raising a question, which I think is an important one, which is that, you know, we obviously have an interest in supporting this meeting with all these logistics and talking about how we can try to ensure that it goes well for the voters. But it's not our, you have to run the meeting in any way. We don't have any authority there. We don't, it's not our meeting to, it's not our meeting, you know.
They're going to elect who they want. They seem to need to make sense to look at our resources of our town and school moderators. So I'm thinking, all right, well, there's Michael Dwayne, there's Susan Clark, there's Gus Seelick, there's Paul Gillis, who is actually, you know, one of the lawyers on the Huntington Act forty-six lawsuit. And who am I missing? Paul. So of those five, Gus seemed like the, a likely suspect to me. And he was at the last meeting and we talked to him afterwards, you know.
He's a very, very good moderator.
If you, if you nominated him, I think that that would just, that would be a way to do it.
But you'll be presiding, though, at the beginning, right?
Yeah, it's probably better if I'm not, if I don't do it.
Oh, it's better if you don't.
Oh, who would be presiding then?
I'm the temporary presiding officer. And if there are any shenanigans like there were last time, I would be handling that. Meaning, meaning before the first article comes out. But the first article is to elect a moderator.
Right.
I'm just saying, like, you can't nominate people yourself because you'll be presiding over the meeting.
That would be kind of weird.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's what I was...
I mean, usually, I don't know about your topic, but usually...
One of us could nominate Gus, but...
Yeah, or somebody else could.
If he's there and...
So would you smooth out with Gus that someone else, because someone else may nominate you? And then we're going to kind of be in the same position as we were with Paul?
That could happen. I, I would, what I would probably say is, I mean, first of all, I just kind of wanted to talk to you to see if anybody was like, Gus Seelick, I hate that guy, you know? Because, you know, if the...
That's what we do here.
It seemed like a good choice to, to me, but I just thought I would start here. Well, I started with Gus, actually. But, and then, I mean, I think that if I were going to do this, what I would say is, you know, the first order of business is to elect a moderator and I am not running for that position.
Okay.
So at the last meeting, who nominated Paul Hanlon?
I did, I think.
Matthew did?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Yeah, I think Matthew did.
So what about you nominating Gus?
That didn't go well.
No, I just like...
I'm going to be, I'm going to be trying to be as, as all-able as possible at this meeting.
You're going to be up in the back corner? That's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm glad to do it. I'm polarizing enough as it is.
Yeah, we need to find...
Apparently a Vera or somebody like that that...
A Vera.
No, I don't mean that insult. I don't mean that as an insult. It's not a, I mean, Gus is wonderful as a moderator.
I, yeah, I've talked to people in the house who's just there and just seems calm.
Trying to think of...
Yeah, he knows...
I, I mean, I can find somebody. I don't, it's not really a problem if you, if you, I, I mean, I don't want people...
You would find somebody to nominate Gus, you said?
Yeah.
Well, I think too, in that, yeah, I mean, it's not a problem if I'm not going to nominate him. I mean, in that house, I mean, the, the reason that was so nasty, there was old stuff in there.
There's a lot of distrust in that room.
That was distrust, exactly. And that, and so how that's done is really important. If it's done correctly, then people evaporate.
I'm a little confused. Why do we have to elect a moderator again?
Right, yeah, weird. If you look at the agenda, what we did last time was we, we elected a temporary presiding officer. That was me. And that person was only going to be presiding until we elected the moderator.
And we never got that part.
And we didn't get that part. Exactly. So it was a temp, it was just a temporary little two-and-a-half-hour job. You know, we adopted Robert's rules and, yeah. I mean, there isn't any reason that I could, could not, I could do it, is what I'm trying to say. And if Gus doesn't want to do it, I can, if you guys want to. I, I prefer that you...
Okay, you're going to have to be moderator. So number forty.
This is for the year, and Seelick.
Yeah, it's for, yeah.
Do we have right now Mary Witsmore? Is that, I got a...
Not as a moderator, not as a moderator. We'll, we'll get to those next two pieces, but...
Yeah. So, so...
I think it sounds, I mean, I, I don't know Gus, but it sounds fine. I wouldn't have any problem with it. And I, but I don't know who to suggest. So anybody here can make the motion. I, I will not, but...
Boy, don't he find somebody? I will. Okay, but if he finds somebody else, okay. Do you know Gus?
No.
All I want to say is that when Gus takes the podium in Callis, he talks a lot about how it's our meeting. He wants to make it to go our way. He wants it to be fair. You know, I hear from this person and that person, the way you can come back again, kind of thing. The usual stuff that moderators go, but he, he has a presence about him and the way he expresses that is very, I want to say calming. He has lost his temper once or twice, but, you know, other than that, I think he, he would be, be very good in making sure it was a fair meeting and we accomplished what the audience wants to accomplish.
Okay. Good. Well, I'll see what we can get. And if you come up with any other ideas in any time, let me know, like...
Did you want to go over these articles?
Yes, yes. So it, you have subject, the first article is the moderator. We just talked about clerk treasurer. It sounds like you have something that you want.
Mary Witsmore. Mary Witsmore. I know you had talked to Laura Allen down there. Yeah, that'd be great. Very comfortable with her.
Okay.
Yes, she does, she does it for Callis and U thirty-two and Washington Central.
And does somebody, do you guys have a suggested date and location for the, for the district?
So to make a, to make a timeline, we need to go all the way to a budget vote before July first. We need to have an election on May twenty-first.
On or by?
On. Because there's six Mondays we have to have in a row here if we, if they decide to go Australian ballot. So that, to have that six Mondays, that would get us to May...
Six Mondays?
May twentieth. And then the twenty-first, we would have an election. And literally the warning to be able to be, for a budget to be voted on, which would be June twenty-fifth, needs to be posted by the twenty-fourth of May, that Friday.
Okay, so May twenty-first, twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
So...
And I, should I, I'm just going to ask the executive committee, should I resend out that timeline that I had sent, had that on there?
Right, I had it.
It'd be good just to do it. Yeah, and then, you, yeah, that's a similar kind of, we're going to vote for, for an Australian ballot.
If it is Australian, we can actually back it up some because it's just a thirty to forty day notice. The six Mondays that give us that, our, out to the twenty-first, because we have to have six Mondays for an Australian ballot. And it only gives, basically, this week if you get to do petitions, the eighth and the fifteenth, you do petitions. It's very fast.
And so this is for the first annual meeting and all subsequent annual meetings. So this one, you're, you're suggesting that somebody would move, that it would be May twenty-first, all subsequent? Would it would be on Saturday or, you have that kind of...
My recommendation would be town meeting. That's what we've been doing. It can be moved again later. We decide something else, but it's been the tradition around here that school meeting happens on town meeting.
Right. On meeting day. So that would be the motion, whoever makes the motion.
This is the first, this is the first annual meeting.
And also...
And subsequent, I see, yeah, yeah. So the first annual will be May twenty-first and then all subsequent would be town meeting day, basically.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that would be the motion.
That would have to be phrased that way, though.
Right.
So are we, just so I can be clear, it seems like you want to go through this to see if there are people in the room who can be lined up to make these motions.
I, I, not, Fassi, I mean, I just want to be clear that this, I, I would be sad if this agenda... It wasn't obvious to me, some of these articles, you read it and it definitely needs more information. You can't just stand up and say, so moved. And that, that's all I'm doing is just raising the flag.
I have a question about the annual meeting being a town meeting. If the annual meeting is actual meeting, how are people going to...
Right, so that, that, that's, that's what you have to decide if it's going to be. And so one of the things that was suggested at the last time was that you actually move that question to after you know whether you're doing things by Australian ballot.
That makes more sense.
And that's what we had talked about back in January, was that you actually have four and you ask the moderator that we'd like to move that until we know, because how you vote on the Australian piece will tell you whether you want it on town meeting day or not.
Yeah.
That's easy to do.
Well, it is, but there's a specific way of doing that that might sound alarming to people because the, the actual way to do that is to move, to suspend the normal rules of order. In order to move item six to position four. There's something along those lines.
Yeah, that's what you do. You suspend the rules. And what you can do, you can just do it by, what doesn't sound alarming is if you say, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do is reorder this agenda. And that's, you know, a consent, which is how you suspend the rules secretly. It's, it's, it's the moderator's best plan. So unless there's an objection, I'd like to suggest that we move article two to become article...
Article five.
Article five, become four.
Article six, become article four. Well, maybe just give a brief explanation of why, I mean, that, that...
Yeah, and explain why.
Did you say article five and six, Matthew?
Article five. I think you should do five and six.
Five and six.
As I was talking about, that, that four really becomes after six.
All right, okay. So it's these two to determine whether to vote on the district's budget and all their public questions by Australian ballot.
So just basically reverse these two?
That would be four.
That's...
This would be four, this would be five, and then this would become six.
So just so you know, you guys have...
We're really going back to one.
Yeah, and you guys actually, your numbers are not...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Robert, we have an old rule and we're just the old one. We're always the new one.
Right, that's one.
So...
So I guess, I guess then, this would be two.
Make Australian ballot.
This is one.
Yeah, that's one.
So then, whether to vote on the district's budget and all their public questions by Australian ballot would be two.
Two, okay.
And then to determine whether to elect members of the district board by Australian ballot would be three.
And then the other one, the date, would be four.
Yeah, four, okay.
Yeah, and that, and Dorothy, what you were saying about do you want it on town meeting also will be able to tell you whether you need six Mondays or not. Because if you're going Australian, you need six Mondays. But if you don't, you can move things up and give more time for Australian, for the budget piece later on. It won't be, because right now, the, the six Mondays is what's really clamping our timeline to get something done before July first for a budget.
It buys, buys us time if, if we're going to Australia.
Thirty days. It's like thirty or thirty-nine days with a, so you have a little bit of time.
Yeah, I think you gain almost a week.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
So is there someone willing to, is someone in this room who just followed that conversation? Is we like to do that, actually? Because...
To, to move there, not to just say the dates or to move there.
Say without objection, I'd like to reorder the agenda so that, you know, these items are two and three.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
And you don't have to say without objection. That can be the moderator. You can just say, I'd like to move that we, that we move particles two, two, three up.
Then you would speak to Gus and that the intent behind that or...
Yeah, yeah. And if, if, if people are funky and somebody says they object, then you just have to have a vote. It's a, it's a vote to suspend the rules. And it, that has to pass by two thirds. So.
So would you be doing this, though, if it's Gus?
I'm sorry?
Is Gus the first line of business?
Gus is the first line of business. So, so if, if, if Gus says yes and is elected, Gus would have to run this. But I'll tell them all about it. It's not, that, that's pretty, that's not scary. To, to, this should be ordering, for somebody, for a moderator.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're very sure.
Not for the moderator.
No, those, those things aren't scary. Those aren't hard, I don't think.
One last, I, I think the best way to do it would be instead of say two or three, is just to actually read whether we're moving up or just say the number.
Oh, move, move, using the numbers of the articles when you make those?
Don't say what they're, and I'm just clarifying, I just, because I think most people would, I don't wanna make it confusing, and I think most people would wanna know what the proposal to move.
And, and explain why.
Explain why. Yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanna, so it is coming up to eight o'clock, which is the warned end of this meeting. We have not gotten to about half of our agenda.
Okay.
So I just wanna check with the committee, it seems like we're wanting to go late, possibly an hour, hopefully not more than an hour.
I need to leave at eight twenty.
You can leave at eight twenty, okay.
Um, the, the thing that I wanted to do was just make sure that you know that if you sort of read through each of these articles, some of them are gonna require somebody to make a motion that's more than just so moved. And so.
Can we do that, though? Can we, do we have to move to amend the article, to include the language before?
It's like filling in a blank, or like.
No.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a war.
So like compensation for board officers, you'd say like, I move that we compensate board officers at a rate of a thousand dollars per year, or something. Whatever it is, like.
Right, okay.
So that's, yeah, and that's all, it, it just means, it just means you know, somebody needs to have at least a starting place.
Right.
Of a motion, yeah. And so, but we don't have to go through this now, if you've got other things that you'd love to do.
I don't mind doing it, I just wanted to just check with the group that, just noting that we're gonna go past our schedule. It's okay, if you have other things, um, square away.
I mean, the, the other ones that looked like, um, those kinds of articles to me were to determine and approve compensation. There are two of those, and so somebody's gonna need to say, I vote that, I move that we, and have an amount in mind for, for those two.
And we do have, we do have this sheet that we can pass around, which sort of, yeah, we've talked before about compensating board members, but this is kinda, I think, what Mary currently gets for taking treasurer and clerk.
It's about, it's about, it's a total of what, what the three do, gonna come up to for clerk and treasurer, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, one of the things that, oh, I forgot to mention this, but one of the things that we talked about was um, how, how useful it would be to have a PowerPoint ability. It would've been really helpful when we were doing amendments last time, when people kept on asking me to read the amendment, you know, and, and it's just, I, I wouldn't wanna have it on all the time, but if somebody has a proposed wording, for an amendment, or in this case, you know, for a compensation wording for any of these articles, it'd be nice to be able to project it and say, okay, so this is my motion, and then people can actually read the motion when it's, you know, and it's not what's on there to warn you. Um, so, and there was some, gonna, somebody there who was gonna.
Yeah, we're still working on getting that person.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of takers right now.
No?
No, people are like, I don't want that. Job.
Well, ask them.
We're paying the booth.
So, still working on it.
Clerical, I mean, seriously, I know, I know that.
I know, I tried, trying to be very serious, I think it's a really good idea, I'm just saying, I've asked a few folks, so I'm gonna keep asking.
I, I, I mentioned this earlier, and I know you didn't think it was a great idea, I really like the idea of using students for these kinds of jobs.
What, students?
I, I, I know that it feels like, oh, they've got schoolwork to do, I, I think it's super educational. And, you know, if you have somebody who's a high achieving student, who's willing to spend, you know, a couple hours, it's, it's a, you know, and all we're asking them to do is, you know, here's my wording, can you type this? They're all better typing than anyone else anyway. So, anyway, just a, just a thought, um, we, we always, Middlesex goes have kids carrying microphones at town meeting, and.
I love that idea.
Yeah, I love it, I was really just.
We didn't have any this year.
Yeah, it's hard to get them, they're busy, and, and it may be not a great idea, but.
Maybe our global citizenship. Maybe Lucy can do that, or she would.
We could ask her. I was thinking, she actually read our civil litigation at our town.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, yeah.
Oh, maybe I should have to read the civil litigation at this meeting. Anyway, um, I think this would be great, and, so, yeah, those, those two about compensation, and then to establish provisions for the payment of any, you know, I think, we'll have to figure out what provisions. This body is going to establish.
What, this is number, this one's number nine.
Yeah, establish provision for payment, uh, well, that's actually new, but it's very similar, because it is establishing not only for before the fiscal year, but continuing on to provide for, in lieu of taxes. Well, actually, that, that's the number ten, the one we're looking at, so.
Right.
But the provisions piece is, that's new, that's new because of the merging of this district of expenses, where I have expenses going on. And how do you pay for those?
So what do you think, if, if you were gonna move that article bill, which I knew I'm.
Yeah, I'm not gonna touch it, touching anything on here.
What would a person who wanted to move this article say? I move to.
To have, have a, a down of the S U, uh, because that is a jointly contributed to.
So we've been checking with our auditors, that's actually legal, Chris Leopold does not think it is. You'll have to call Chris.
So what other source would there be that would?
You have, you would, what you're doing is basically saying that you, you, because the next one is about taking out of borrowing money ahead of time. So that's where the money's gonna come from, that's the source, Chris, this is saying, yeah.
But then that could be first before.
I was gonna say, so if we rearrange these.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's.
Rearrange them in what way?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, so that you're establishing the ability to borrow money before you're saying providing a provision for anybody.
Though it's kind of moot, I mean, it's.
So.
So what are those numbered articles?
Reverse.
I guess that's.
To establish provision, what numbers have?
Seven, eight.
That's seven?
Either, you can make seven contingent upon each passing.
I think it makes sense to reverse them.
Yeah.
So that would be another.
So would that have to be kind of a first start?
Can you just have a second motion? Is that what you mean? Yeah, I would kind of, I would have a second motion.
So that we don't make it confusing.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could wait until you get to that.
It'd be easy for us, because we're used to it.
Yeah, it would be too. So you would do that, Chris, you would change the order of those? So basically, it's two, we're changing.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, the, if you did reverse the order, you would, first you'd authorize the district, that's just a yes or no. And then to establish provisions for the payment, there would have to be, you know, I would move to, I, I'm not sure what the wording would be, what provisions would be establishing.
I'll ask, I can ask Chris Leopold for the, if he's got any suggestions for wording, but I think it's really, I've, I move that the Washington Central Unified Union School District pay any expenses incurred ahead of time, and that those, before July first, vendors have provided service. That's where, that, how I would do that one. Uh, the first one is the borrow, you know, as you're gonna reverse it, Chris, which makes a lot of sense. You know, we already, that's where the money's coming from.
Right.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, our auditors already told us in meeting with us, we have to, we should, need to be tracking these things pretty closely.
So I hate to be this guy, but I am this guy.
We're done.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Those were the other ones? Okay, well, I'll, I'll.
Appreciate the opportunity to go through that.
Yeah, this is great.
Sure. Um, and I will, um, just let you know, um, what I hear from Gus for sure, and if you have any thoughts about that, or, should I just let you know that?
Sure.
Will you let me know if Gus is gonna do it or?
I, yeah, we, we will, we can have a conversation about that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good question for your time.
Thank you.
A good thought, on this.
So, given that, um, Cory has to leave at eight twenty, and I would like to get his thoughts or opinions on our anecdotes and decision about, you know, which consulting we'll go with. Um, I guess I would propose that we move into executive session, so that we can have that discussion, actually.
Like a motion?
And, and we'll do, go into executive session at eight oh nine, for personal issue.
Okay. Second?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll be there. So we come out of executive session at eight twenty-one, and is there an emotion?
I'll make a motion to hire Mark Andrews as their superintendent search consultant.
One second. Second, is there any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, suspensions, objections, thanks.
All right. I'll stay all night.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. See if we can march through, uh.
So I offered to, to meet next week, I'll, I'll be traveling on Tuesday on.
Yeah, so the contingency planning is essentially speaking to members of the leadership team who have superintendent licenses about, um, you know, possible contingencies as this unfolds. Uh, as Cory mentioned, uh, he spoke to them and set up a time that he'll be away, so Flor and I are gonna have that meeting at, at next Wednesday, I believe, is that right?
Yeah, I was gonna say at ten.
But you're also gonna schedule a meeting to meet with Mark, is that, you mentioned, it seems like.
Yeah, well, we can, we can talk about that now, we gotta talk about when our next executive committee meeting is gonna be, and it could be Monday, so we, we'll wanna talk about that, too.
Well, it can't be Monday, isn't it?
This is district organization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless it's after.
Well, before or after, yeah.
Well, after, it would be the transition.
The other thing, the other thing the committee could do would be to designate a couple of people to work with Mark on, on the posting specifically, so that, and just say authorize them to post it even.
Yep.
And then we could move forward that way as well.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, everyone.
So that's, that's pretty much it on two point three. Uh, two point five is the last day of school.
Right, so as you all know, we had a study last Friday, and I wanna really thank Paul of the Middlesex. Um, you really was helpful in that. The, right now, currently, the last day for elementary schools, if we do a hundred and fifty days, is June twenty-first, a Friday. And for U thirty-two, because they're making up a day this Friday, would be June twenty, Monday, June twenty-fourth. Um, I was working with the Labor Management Committee and talking with them. Uh, I have not, uh, talked briefly, many different conversations, but with leadership team, but not a whole, because we usually try to wait till about April vacation, because there hasn't been snow, and there's snow in the forecast for this Friday. So I usually try not to wait to then, the last day. But I wanted to bring it to all of you, because I knew if I started with every local board, once I say that one place, one board approves what we're doing, it's just better to have it all in uniformity. So I would recommend to you that the last day at school for U thirty-two be on the twenty-first, so it'll be one loss of student days. We still keep a hundred and ninety teacher days, that's the contract that they're under. And that you move the elementary to Thursday, the twentieth, so they have a hundred and seventy-nine days.
We're allowed to have one day short?
You're allowed to have a hundred, you must by state statute have a hundred and seventy-five days.
Oh, 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 so we're just going against our own.
Our own, our own hundred and eighty that we do. So there's nothing, uh, through state law that's requiring that you need to go a hundred and eighty.
Is there any, um, oh, I don't know, some, a good thing, a good issue for the teachers?
So the teach, we need to keep them at a hundred and ninety, so they're gonna.
Oh, they're gonna have a hundred and ninety.
They're gonna have a hundred and ninety, otherwise we get into payroll issues and all that. So they're still gonna, they're gonna, that way they would each have two in-service days. We had to move one for U thirty, this was all due to the water main breaks that happened in Marpilla, so we were down quite a bit. Uh, the, the associations asked me to look at the, one of the water main days, they were here for half the day, the staff was not the, and to look, and give them that as one of the in-service days, I said to them. I'm, I think, and I'm kind of in favor of that, but we're gonna talk about workload, what they did for work that day.
You, in terms of family and daycare?
Yeah.
Seems to me keeping the elementary kids on the same day as the high school kids, because that's where the problem arises.
So we had that conversation in labor management, and they said, remember, those last three or four days were in exams.
Were what?
Were in exams at U thirty-two, so that the kids, the high school kids are, some are there and some aren't there. I know the middle school doesn't have exams, so I'm fine going both the same day, I'm just.
Yeah, that's what I think I was.
Yeah.
That's fine.
The home plan.
You, you, you know, my guns, I actually bring in two for.
Okay, okay.
That way.
Just for practical purposes.
So we'll say the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, everybody.
Which is how we make, I.
I'll move that we amend the school calendar this year, so that, uh, school for, um, our entire supervisor union ends on Friday, June twenty-one.
Is there a second? It's ready.
And that's an anonymous motion, so if it gets out to the grandparent, we don't know who said it.
We don't see, we don't see.
No, David, please, no, David. No discussion of the nuances of what we were doing.
I think we gotta put it all caps, hand the address.
Just your address.
Hold for a moment.
Is there any discussion, motion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspensions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that help.
So before we get to the last item on our agenda, which will be executive session, so that we can let people go, when do we wanna schedule our next committee meeting?
Is, is it gonna be for, for purpose?
That is a good question.
Yeah.
I guess if we designate a couple of representatives to work with Mark on getting a posting together and out, if the committee's comfortable with that, uh, then it wouldn't be necessary for us to be immediately, I think. Except possibly for the purposes of reviewing other meetings and conversations that might happen, I suppose. And also to discuss communication, and I can think of reasons why we might wanna, you know, um, so.
Well, then, I would, I would, okay, so if we, does it need to take several people for with Mark? It would be, would necessarily be one meeting if it's more, what's the form number that we have to worry about?
Four.
So we, so it should be three, then to avoid, um, harm issues, or meeting issues.
I would, I would suggest, I mean, he was, what he was saying is he wants a board liaison, so we should, we might wanna determine who that is.
Yeah.
And I think two's probably enough, unless you feel like there's some.
Or we could have.
Three, I would go to the max, that, that people are able to do.
Yeah, I was saying that at least have a backup, so that.
Yeah, for scheduling.
It might be impossible for three to meet, but certainly two can.
Okay.
And all, and all three should be there, and that, that way, if someone isn't, there's, there are room left to speak.
I mean, I already, I, I can't meet on Monday, so if there's a sense of urgency about sort of getting with Mark right away to move things forward on that day, I'm not available, so.
So you're gonna be at the district meeting, no?
I'll be there, but I'm just saying during the day, I'm working, I could be down in Brattleboro for work meetings and everything, so.
But, but, let's do the first of it, so like, you can be the board liaison, since you, the, I think that's feel comfortable with that. And then, get, you're suggesting two other people that would, that would work.
And I would like to be part of that group.
You what?
I would like to be part of that group, but, but, you know, that kind of depends also, again, when the meeting, the get-togethers would occur. If they're occurring like, in the morning, I can do it later in the afternoon, I can, midday just doesn't work for me, so I would defer to what works best for everybody in that.
I can, to Mark, my schedule's pretty flexible usually, and I also have video conference capacity that's, works really well and is easy to use, so I can set that up for folks, too.
I, I would like to be part of that group, too, but also, you know, there's more voices here.
No, I, I, go ahead with Chris and Matthew, I knew it was fine with me.
Are you okay with that, or would you like to be part of that?
You guys, I'm really comfortable with all the interviews, isn't it?
Okay.
Yeah, all, it's a good team.
I'm fine with being a liaison informally, and I think that requires a motion, but I think if we're gonna designate three people to actually, like,
I think we should make one person.
Do something, post it, position.
I'll move that we, that we have, um, Chris and Flor and Matthew work with Mark, and that Matthew be the official liaison. Or maybe we don't need that. Or maybe we don't need that part.
It's okay, I think it's to, to, uh, prepare and post.
Oh, oh, you want to be more specific, you're like, to prepare and post, um, superintendent opening for interim superintendent.
Okay. I just want to check with the recorder, I'm sorry, I forgot. Tiffany, is that, do you have it?
This is what I have, a motion to have Chris, Flor, Matthew work with Mark, and Matthew be the official liaison to prepare and post superintendent opening for interim superintendent.
You can take it, I think you can take out the part of.
Yeah, take, take.
Take out the liaison.
Part of the liaison.
Okay.
I think it's fine for me just to do those.
And I was just.
Without objection.
Right.
Right, um.
Okay.
Uh, will that, will, one of these things that he lists that we need to do is essential qualifications, will that be?
Can be part of that.
I think that will be part of that, for sure. I just was kind of, okay, I'm good.
Is there a second to the motion?
No, second.
I can't, because I'm, I'm just all over it, so.
There is a second to it.
Any, uh, just further discussion of the motion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, thank you very much. Uh, still, when would the next meeting of the executive committee be, Doug?
So.
Do we want to set a date and a time?
Should we do it next Thursday again, so it doesn't, to, a week, because you're saying you can't do it Monday, or should?
Well, we couldn't do it Monday anyway, but.
Yeah.
What needs to be done, I mean, do we, will the board, will they need to, you want, we would need to be.
The following week is the break week, I don't know if people have plans to be away, or.
Am I any opposed to suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Once you get that item, you've got probably two to three weeks, and I think where you're gonna want to, the thing you want to do is, I think, you're gonna want to decide from this board and from the SU board, what information do you need to gather? I.e., do you need to, do you want any input session, or do you want to just do a survey, and I think with the time you have, it may just be a survey, and do you want something with a leadership team? I mean, I think that's, like, that's about as far as you can go with the time constraints, and, you know, Mark is being pretty eager about that. And so, the next time you, you want to think about gathering, my suggestion is coming back from April break as a, as a, as a committee. We have a lot of board meetings going on that week, but I think we can figure something out. Uh, the transition board, they have one piece of work they have to do next week, which is get a warning, if there's an Australian ballot, well, either way, they need to get a warning posted for an annual meeting, wherever that is, and that's essentially. And I'm hoping Monday night, I know Matthew emailed the transition board member saying, hopefully Monday night that can be done after the district organization, assuming the district organization goes forward. Because we want to get that thing, so people can get petitions if it's Australian, or, you know, all that, as soon as possible.
Should we talk to Mark, I mean, to see if there's any housecleaning that we can do next week, or even with partial.
Yeah, I think that's one thing about Matt, no, Matt, Matthew should reach out to him.
I'll, I'll, I'll write to him tonight, and I will likely talk to him tomorrow, so, you know, if there's some reason why, it seems like we need to call a meeting sooner, I'll just, like, well, no, we'll try to figure it out.
My, my, my piece is just, I'm just thinking of general search timelines and how they work, that first, once you get a post, you do it two to three weeks, things kind of sit, but you want to be gathering, who's your committee, and what are the attributes you want to be looking for?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
And that could happen that week coming back, to get into, I would think, and Mark will advise you on that, but I'm just, we're just running principle on right now, so it's kind of the same idea, it's just where do you put the, the dates?
Well, I think prior to that, if we can, even if, getting that leadership team feedback, all of those pieces, we have that before going into that meeting, I mean, it strikes me that the more we have early, the better. I mean, I would believe, I would see what Mark says, in terms of what.
Yeah, I'll check.
He thinks there's.
I, I got the general impression from Mark that he wanted to meet with the leadership team with maybe one or two of us, rather than the leadership team and our full executive board.
So, yeah, well, we'll, we can figure that out, but, uh, the, I just want to see if we can set a date while we're here.
Looking at this, Matthew, and, and it looks like the.
I don't have it in front of me, by the way.
Yeah, so it looks like the only day that there is, so be like the twenty-sixth, which is a Friday.
What's, well, I'm sorry.
So if you look at right after vacation, there's a meeting every day, except.
This is a fun schedule.
Yeah.
Berlin's special election, oh, we have.
So the twenty-third is actually just the Berlin special election, there's not.
Australian ballot.
That's Australian ballot, it's not a.
It's not a meeting.
So what, what about Tuesday, the twenty-third, are people available that day?
I'm just here, but.
Okay. Do you mind if we?
Go ahead, please.
We'll plan on the twenty-third then, at, and we, if, if you can be here, Chris, I believe, and if people are also available, we could actually start meeting a little earlier, because I think it was for Mary Lynn, who's coming from downtown.
Oh, for six, five thirty, I have to meet five thirty.
Does five thirty work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so the only thing left on our, uh, agenda is to have an executive session for a staffing issue, and so if we, uh, are ready, if there's no other business, then we can.
And we'll, that we go into executive session at eight thirty-seven, or the personnel issue, for staffing issue.
I'll second.
Personnel issue.
Personnel.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.